Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff. Also, we have with us greatness, a person has tremendous reputation and is well-known in this field of municipal law, the very talented Jim Brady is filling in for Keith Pollock off the ice. James, a pleasure, good to see you, we know we're in good hands.
I'm not leaving.
With that being said, Erica, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Physikalley?
Here.
Councilmember Bray Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here, we all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And we also have some very talented people from Davie here that we're going to hold off on that for just a minute because we want to take some time to talk about our transition and what transpired and all the great things that we're hearing about the service that you're providing since you came over here on the first. Proclamation that I'm honored to present to the Military Hero Support Foundation in support of Military Hero Support Foundation Day. And what I'd like to do, and I see that you're here in the audience, God bless the military, we're so fortunate, we tell everybody every day. We're able to enjoy these freedoms and walk around feeling safe and secure because of organizations like you all that just protect us and allow us to enjoy this American dream that we enjoy every day. With that being said, I think what I'd like to do is go down there and make the presentation. If we can go down and take a picture here shortly, and I know that you probably have a couple of words, so let me come down there to you. I absolutely insist that I come down, I come down to you, okay? Absolutely. That's why I said I want to come down.
Oh, thank you, thank you, you guys, this is such an honor.
Again, this is a proclamation from the town of South, don't stop that, don't start that because I'll do the same thing, I gotta tell you. I'm not very tough when it comes to these things. Whereas the mission of the Military Hero Support Foundation is to provide our military veterans direction and support in achieving an effective transition during their rental return home, and whereas the goal of the Military Hero Support Foundation is to act as an advocate and liaison between service members, their families, and available resources within the military and the local community, and whereas the Military Hero Support Foundation works to maximize the effectiveness of all new and existing resources and to ensure accurate and timely communication to our men and women once on the home front, and whereas the Military Hero Support Foundation will continue to support our military personnel deployed in support of Operation Enduring Freedom with shipments of monthly care packages, whereas the Military Hero Support Foundation will endeavor to raise public and professional awareness and to encourage our community to join them in the success of their mission. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Town Council, the Town of Southwest Ranches hereby proclaim February the 13th, 2014, as Military Hero Support Foundation Day. Congratulations.
If I could say a couple words now?
I'm going to let you, let's get some pictures and I'm going to save the best for last. That's why I don't, I don't stand aside.
Hi, everyone, excuse my back, I'm sorry. Hi, everyone, we are Military Hero Support Foundation, and there are some of our pictures up there which is amazing. We also take care of all the military police and the military police dogs also. Our care packages mean so much to our guys, our women over there also. These are the troops over there fighting for our freedom, and we're taking care of the ones, a lot of the ones that have no next of kin, or their parents are deceased or they joined from foster care, or they're just a majority of a group that's just not getting any care packages. And you know what? It's so important that they know that they are not forgotten. So this is what our mission is, and we also have another mission. We take care of the ones coming home, we help them with the transition, with their VA, if they need housing, if they need work on their homes. Carol takes care of the ones that are left behind, that does the families, take care of the moms that need school supplies for their children. And the food that you guys donated, I have pictures. Sorry, I know I talk a lot. The toys that you guys gave, Southwest Ranches gave, it went to Fort Bragg, and let me tell you something, there, I see here's the pictures of everyone with the toys, and it also went to a native village that we did a Christmas party to for some chief's families. So these toys that you guys collected, again, were amazing, and I can't thank you enough. And the food you guys collected went to the families that are left behind and also to the troops overseas. Here are some more pictures which is also all of you to look at. These are some of our officers, and they are from this area, so, and also their dogs. So, again, I can't thank you enough, I know I talk a lot. Chief is going to speak for us also, Tom and Carol, so, again, thank you, and this is for you guys, we gave a certificate of the town, Southwest Ranches, excuse me, and then Chief has something to present. Again, thank you guys for coming on board with us, you're our heroes, and God bless all of you, and please stay with us, we're sending these care packages every month, and if you guys have anyone that you needs school hours, you know what, call us and we'll help you, and, you know, get your school involved, get the churches, we'll go wherever you all want us to go and speak. Thank you and God bless you guys. Chief?
I don't think he needs it. Yeah. Didn't know I was going to be speaking today, but a few weeks ago, actually a few months ago, I went to Bass Pro to get some fishing gear for my son and I had to go do some fishing. And I left for a volunteer at a JROTC event to judge their drilling. One of the older guys, they were like, hey, I'm going to Bass Pro because I'm a fish. I said, I need to learn that, me and my son, so I stayed in uniform, went there, I met these two lovely ladies, and Carla does talk a lot, she stopped me on my way in.
Run it out for him, excuse me.
So when I walked over to the little setup that they had, while she was talking, being in the military and officers, you can understand this, when you're going into a situation you don't understand, you're looking at everything, you're worried it's surrounding. So as she's talking to me, I'm looking at what she's pointing at and what she's doing, and immediately I was able to identify that priority mail box that I've been on the receiving end of several times, I've deployed several times to Iraq and Afghanistan and various other places, and I've been on the receiving end of those boxes and never knew where they came from. And the boxes meant a lot to a lot of us out there, even people that had families, some people just not, they didn't send me type things, so those boxes meant a lot. So when I saw the boxes, I started paying attention to what she was saying, I thought she was just going to ask me for some money. So she asked me if I was interested in, you know, what they were doing and talking to them, and eventually I asked to be a part of them, and they welcomed me with open arms, and I'm a testament to these care packages that we get, and a lot of the young families that we have here in Miami, sorry, not Southwest Ranches, I'm over at South Town in Miami, they was on the receiving end of several Thanksgiving baskets, we have single moms, we have parents that are big in size but not big in pay. So they were able to take care of Thanksgiving baskets, Christmas kids for the toys, and it meant a lot, even for the active duty people that are right here serving here in Miami. So everything that they're doing, it makes a difference for us in uniform, and that's why I was happy to accept them into the organization. And with all of that being said, all the stuff that you guys gave, the foundation, I would like to present this on to you guys, the mayor, Reece, presented to the Town of Southwest Ranches in recognition and appreciation of their unselfish and overwhelming support and contributions to the men, women, and families of the United States armed forces. Never let a hero stand alone, Military Hero Support Foundation.
I'm a little short one down here. My name is Carol, and I am the vice president, which I just received that wonderful name. But what we do is, I basically try to take care of the ones that are left at home. Sometimes someone may need diapers, or, you know, they need school supplies, clothing, things of that nature, so I'm always collecting different items, and if we get a phone call that there is a family in distress with food, clothing, or anything, we try to help them that way. But the care packages are one fantastic thing which we do, we're always collecting, actually with the school hours, we do a pack and event, we're going to be having a large pack and event at Bass Pro on March 15th, and what they're doing, it's on their webpage and on their asking, anyone in the community would like to help pack a box, see what it's about, to come there on March 15th from 10:00 in the morning till 6:00, we'll be there, and to bring some supplies. They'll even, I think they have the list also on their webpage as to what we would need to start packing the boxes. So as many boxes we can get packed that day, we'll get them shipped right out. So I-
They'll be out in like 10, 8, 6, 5, 4.
Right, right. So I really want to say thank you for everything you have done, helping these kids, the Military Heroes, kids for Christmas was wonderful, and it was just awesome to see all the parents come in uniform, there were the grandparents because both parents were deployed or something. So it really means a lot, and thank you so much for what you're doing for us, can't thank you enough, really. I want to tell you something real quick, I know I'm talking too much, but my brother-in-law, Tom, we had a homeless soldier, and let me tell you something, this soldier was a Purple Heart, is, not was, is a Purple Heart recipient, and this was, he was homeless, and Tom came on board with us, well, he's my brother-in-law, so he has to come on board, and he gave him shelter in his, one of his duplexes, and he's still taking care of him. So I wanted, Tom, just to tell you a little about, this is all what we do, and again, I don't know if I told you all this, we are nonprofit, none of us get paid, there will never, ever, ever be a payroll. You donate a dollar, that dollar goes to our troops, so please know that, you guys. I know I go around begging for money, I do, I will not lie. I take care of homeless kids all day, so, you know, I'm doing that for them too. So anyway, please know that we are nonprofit, and we do this because, you know what, God put it in its heart to do this. So, Tom?
Just wanted to reiterate, thank you very much for your support, it was really great, the support we got from you guys for Christmas, and the good feelings we got from the folks up at Fort Bragg, it was fabulous, and really came very right for this community, this community in particular really stood out and helped us do our part, so thank you.
Thank you guys, keep up the great work, we're here for you, and again, we appreciate not only the things that you're doing for the families and all those that are involved in allowing us our liberties and enjoy this wonderful country that we're in. Okay, let's see, the last time we got together, I think, the transition was, Mr. Lemack, what was it, February the 1st at 12:00 AM and 1 second, I think, is during the transition time, and I've got to tell you that it was quite an event, you know, while it was early in the morning, it was quite an event, and what we wanted to do is that, wanted to bring you all here, obviously, and really give, you know, tribute, confirmation of how hard you all and how hard we all put together our minds and our resources and our thoughts with regards to this new police service in the Town of Southwest Ranches, and just recognize the unique plan that you all put together, creating another district, an additional deputy, going back to this community policing where the residents of the community now are going to become very familiar with those that are responsible for those districts and establishing this relationship with the police officers and members of our community, and I want to, I want to thank you, want to thank you for that. And if I just, also on the other side, Colonel Pollock was here with probably, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 of his men, and were nothing but very, very supportive and wished everybody nothing but the very best, and said that it's been a wonderful tenure, it's been an honor serving the Town of Southwest Ranches, we wish you nothing but the very best, and we're always here for you. So that was a lot of class and wonderful people at BSO. But, and again, I want to say hello and recognize a very dear friend from the Town of Davie, the mayor, Judy Paul, who is here at 12 o'clock in the morning as well, you would have never known as 12 o'clock in the morning, still full of vim and vigor and wide awake and excited about this transition as were we. Rick Lemack, the town manager, again, Rick, and Chief Lynn, can't thank you enough, there's a lot of things went on in those several months, and in anticipation and preparation of this transition, and I know I've heard nothing but positive comments, we know what's you doing, I know you have the bicycle patrol out there, and this is the first time in a while where we literally have residents calling us and telling us that, hey, this is pretty cool, they're out there, and we recognize that and we appreciate the efforts and the things that are going on that you all are involved with in our community, and we look forward to a long-term relationship, positive and wonderful relationship, and if it's, and I know it's going to be, I told you this before, Rick, and Chief, and Mayor, with regards to our fire and EMS service, when Pines was here, BSO was here, and Pines was here, they did an outstanding job, and it just seemed like it just kept getting better and better, and we didn't think that it was possible to get better, but you stepped in when we needed you, and I've got to tell you that it's been nothing but wonderful, the service has been great, the cooperation with our volunteer firefighters, and from the bottom of our hearts, thank you, we really, really, really appreciate it. So with that being said, I know that Andy wants to say a few words, I suspect a couple of council members, we're going to give you an opportunity to do that as well, but we'd also like to get everybody together and take official photographs so that we can promote the start of this relationship, this long-term relationship, that we know you're going to do an outstanding job for the Town of Southwest Ranches, so we look forward to that. And again, thank you for all your efforts and your support and everything that you've done to put us in this position to be here today, we appreciate it very much. Andy?
So I wasn't sure, thank you, Mayor, I wasn't sure if council wanted to say anything, I don't want to jump in front of anybody I work for. Actually, I do want to take a moment to thank Mayor Paul and Rick Lemack, Chief Lynn, and certainly the rest of the Davie Police Staff. This is a hugely complex, unprecedented change that we made here, the professionalism that was displayed throughout by Davie Police, their attention to detail has been second to none. If I had to draw a picture-perfect transition and how I would hope it would go, that's exactly how it's gone. So, you know, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the roles that you guys have played in that transition. Quartermaster staff working with our people has been outstanding, your vehicle people, whoever we've dealt with, right from top to bottom, it's been absolutely outstanding. And the other thing I do want to say, and this is something I have a little bit more experience with maybe than council, I've had the opportunity to interact much more with the officers that have been, I'll say have been selected by you to serve here in Southwest Ranches, and it's been, you chose very well. We've got, you've put together just an outstanding team for us, every time I meet, you know, and deal with one of the officers, I've been very impressed, I meet somebody else and they just raise it to the next level. And even above, beyond that, there are two people who I do want to single out, and that's Detective Brilliant and Bill Gallagher, who are assigned to our building here, in, I guess, less than two weeks now, or just about two weeks, they've become part of the family here, we're tickled to have them, and, you know, Chief, I don't know what you do with shifts, but you can't have those guys back. So, thank you.
And Bill, sorry, I've missed you back there, welcome to the family, and it's great to have you guys. Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I just really, it's been a great transition, and I have to tell you that about two or three days after the transition took place, I was, I had to catch an early flight, and it was about like 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, and I'm driving down Griffin Road, and there's only one other headlight, or actually taillight at the time, out there on the road, and we got to the light at Griffin and Weston Road there, Dykes, and who is it, it's, you know, it's a Davie Police car right there. So it's just seen the year officers throughout the town, heard nothing but great feedback, it just feels like you all are already part of the community, and frankly, that was one of the main things that we were looking for. BSO is a highly qualified organization, they did a fantastic job for us, we're in debt to them, but we honestly were looking for something that was a little bit more family that we felt like we could really partner with, and that's what you all have provided in addition to the great service and the great protection that you provide, so just thank you so much, we're excited, I'm excited about where we're going to go from here, and it's just been fantastic, thank you.
Freddie?
Yeah, also, this goes back with me, I'm probably one of the, I am one of the original commissioners, and I'll never forget, when we were trying to set this city up, we was having problems with the police and everything and fire, and you people stepped up and offered us the fire department, which really helped us a lot at that time, and it seemed like every time we get in trouble, you all come up and help us, and I just want to thank you very much. I had always figured that we needed you here because I think we got more Davie people in our city limits, and we got our own people with the subdivisions that's here, so we got double coverage, you're here already and now you're helping us, so everything I've seen so far is positive and I knew it would be, I want to thank you a lot.
Thank you, Mayor. Can't say enough good things, I can make it short and sweet for you, outside, cutting the grass, picking up litter, actually cleaning a fish over the weekend, thank, caught one finally. Several people pulled me over, said, since we switched to Davie, they're everywhere. People are noticing it, people are seeing it, and it's got to help, it's got to, it's got to help us throughout, you know, throughout this whole area, it's just great, and I can't thank you guys enough. I mean, when I get the comments and I see the bike guy, the bike policeman go by and everybody's going, hey, where did he come from, you know, that kind of thing, it's really good, and we really appreciate it. So, you know, just want to thank you.
I'm going to be a little longer because I got a quick story to tell. We have two very large dogs at my house, and one of them regularly gets out, and he got out the other morning, and my wife came and woke me up, said, honey, the dog got out, you got to go get him, so, I'm half awake, I get up, throw on a t-shirt and some shorts, and I go walking for the dog, and the wife's out in the front yard fixing all her decorations because those of you that know my house, every single holiday, no matter what it is, it's decorated inside and out, and to the nines, trust me. So here comes a Davie Police car down the street, and he pulls up in front of my house, stops, gets out and starts taking pictures of my front yard, and I'm laughing because I knew what he was doing, he says, so I said, don't mind me, I got to go get my dog, I said, you can talk to my wife, so my wife's out there talking to him, she has no makeup on, she's absolutely livid, and so I said, honey, by the way, when he's done looking at the outside, please take him and show him the inside, it doesn't do any justice. So he's like, this is Officer Rosen, by the way, is who it is. So anyhow, so I'm chit-chatting, I go get the dog, I come back from the end of the street, he was coming out of the house and his mouth was open, he said, and I was just getting mine flowers and a box of chocolates. I said, well, you better not bring her here. Anyhow, so he took a bunch of pictures, and those of you that know, my, every room in my house is done, the dining room tables, and it also happens to me my anniversary, so it's really over the top, but anyhow, so Officer Rosen, it was a pleasure, had a lot of fun, took a lot of pictures, he says, I said, come by every holiday, it's crazy here, so anyhow, so it was a thrill to see him out and about, other residents that I've run into have said the same great comments that they're out, a lot of them complain, you know, they're going to be doing a lot of traffic stops, I said, well, hopefully it's not you, but, and I remind them that usually you'll find it's the residents speeding more so than others. Anyhow, but it's a great pleasure, we look forward to it, we're thrilled, we're happy, and thank you again.
You know, Mayor and Rick and Chief, no pressure, no pressure, just want to make sure that we didn't add an additional pressure, but we look forward to this relationship, and you're more than welcome, Mayor, it's always a pleasure to see you, it's always a pleasure to hear from you, and then we'd like to come down and get some pictures to preserve this moment, it is a historical moment in the history of police services because I don't know if there's other municipalities that are involved with other municipalities providing police services, so it's great stuff.
Well, absolutely thrilled to be here and thank you for all those accolades, you know, I'm going to walk out of here, I won't be able to get through the door, but it's just a natural fit. Davie and Southwest Ranches have always had so much in common, and right after we came in, and as you said before, at midnight, we were here for the changing of the guard, and it just felt so natural, and we're very happy to be part of your family as well. And right after we came on board, we participated with you in a large animal disaster program, which actually came in handy, many of you saw on the news that there was a rescue, and I was dutifully shown because they started rescuing the cow before the proper slings arrived, and I was given a very good lesson on what the proper slings are to use and to remove the animal and so forth. So it's nice to have people on our staff now that are trained and will work with you, and I'm hoping in the future that we can expand our equestrian-related activities, and it's just a natural fit for us, and we appreciate being here and sharing this with you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
No problem. Way to away Facebook you.
Andy, why is your arm around the mayor?
Don't we have a special award for Mr. Brady? I'm sure we have to have something.
We got to have something.
Hey, listen, it's Love Fest, we might as well keep going. We like these things there, Mr. Brady, we like these things.
Mayor, I was going to tell you a story. When I drafted the first project in New York City, without which you would not have the opportunity to do this.
I did not know that. Interesting.
Good stuff. Learn something all the time.
Okay. I think I'll just adjourn the meeting, it's been so much fun. This is very unprecedented in the town of Southwest Ranches. This meeting is hereby just.
There you go. Roll it on the next one.
That's right. Okay, item number five, public comment.
We have three speakers this evening. First speaker is Vince Valetta, followed by Noel Hollingsworth, and the last speaker is Dee Schroeder.
Mayor, I reserve my time for item 10. Thank you.
There's some documents being passed out. It's on the census that I pulled up for our town, and if you look at the first page, it'll say Southwest Ranches Florida demographics. And the first thing it says is statewide claims to fame. And it's Southwest Ranches is fourth in the Florida out of the 453 cities in Florida. I didn't, I thought there was more, but there's only 453. We are number four in home ownership rate. Means there's only three other municipalities that have more homes ownership per capita than we do. That is really big. The next two, the home median value and the income per household, we are ninth in the state. If you're number four, you're in the top 1 percent. If you're in number nine, you're in the top 2 percent in the state. We're also 20th out of 453 cities in income per capita. That means every person in a town, by all of our income divided per capita. That makes us in the top 5 percent income earners in the state. That is very big. I'd like for you to take a look at our demographics, people demographics. You see where we are very evenly spread out among the various different ethnic groups percentage-wise, as far as the country is looked. If you take a look at the education, is what I want you to take a look at next. That is very interesting. Eighty-eight percent have a high school education, which is slightly more than the 85 percent statewide average. But the bigger number is the 40 percent of our residents are college educated, have a college degree. We're number 64 in the state, 64th highest community. That means we're in the top 15 percent. The other municipalities that are above us are all university towns. Every last one of them. We don't have a university. We don't even have a public school. So, that is a very interesting, interesting one. The very last page I'd like you to take a look at. A gentleman, can I have a few more minutes?
Absolutely, and I'll preface it by saying, Mr. Brady, I know this is the first one you've come to, but we violate Robert rules all the time when we get public input, just as an FYI.
Take a look at the last page. A gentleman at the University of Virginia, and I am boggled by what he did. He took every individual in the United States and made a map, a census map, one dot per person for each census tract. And since he doesn't have addresses, he equal-distanced each of the dots for each color in the census tract. So, you'll see that places that have water bodies and very large empty pieces of land also have dots, because it's within the census tract. But visually, if you take a look at our municipality, we don't have any pockets of any one ethnic group. We are all distributed among ourselves, and what has been said by the person when I spoke to him at the University of Virginia, we are the epitome of the melting pot of the United States. If you take a look at the municipalities to the north and south of us, you will see pockets of ethnicity. But within our, poor little town, and we can't say that anymore, we are spread out by different means. And the means is, we want to live here. And I just wanted everyone to take a look, and you take a look at the data, and if you want to take a better picture, just go to the website, because it shows it a lot better on the website than it does on a printout. So, I want to thank you, and have a good evening.
Noel, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Noel.
Noel used the computer.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start my discussion, I'd like to wish you all tomorrow a very happy Valentine's I have a little complaint, Andy, just a tiny one. I have seen our Davie Police, and I do say Davie Police, throughout our town. I really want to see Southwest Ranches, and Davie can be down here, because they're really supposed to be ours. So, when you go into other municipalities, you see their name. I really want to see ours, big. I mean, big, you know? If I see a little tiny thing down here on the bottom of the car, God, Andy, I try so hard to stay out of here, but I'm going to be in here every day. I, I can, okay, so, so you kind of know where I'm going, right? And, and, you know, when you have a problem, you know, I could go to Doug, I could go to Freddie, I could go to Gary, I could go to Jeff, I could go to Steve. But when you really have a problem, you go right to the top. And you're the top. You're in charge. So, remember, big. I want everybody to know it's Southwest Ranches, and that we're kind of being sponsored by Davie. Not that I have a problem with them, not yet anyways, but, you know. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to discuss something that went on at the last board meeting that I wasn't here. And not for nothing, I'm not kicking rocks, or kicking anybody, or kicking anything else that might look like rocks, but for the lack of a better use of words, I'm really happy and I'm very proud to be in charge of the historical board, okay? I know what I'm going to do, I know when I'm going to do it. I have a board that was put together, and they're very good people and extremely competent. And so, to come in here and take up the time of the employees, just to say we had a meeting is asinine, because it costs the town money. And that's one thing I don't want to do, is cost the town money. Because when the town gets cost money, I get cost money. There is a plan, it is a good board, we will address it, address it when we are ready. Not when anybody else tells me I have to be ready. Because I want you to really know, I'm in charge, okay? So, if you have any problems, my number is 305-986-8007. And just like Andy, I can take the heat. I don't know if you'll like what's dished out afterwards, but I can take it. So, if there is any problems from anybody, please call. Just not between the witching hours of 1 o'clock and 4:00 in the morning, because I just became a grandmother recently, and that's the witching hours between the new baby, and her name is Athena, and I'm in love. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dee. Grandma.
Bob Hartman is the last speaker.
I have a bit of an anecdote about our new police force. I think you guys made the right decision, and I'll tell you why. No, I didn't get out of the ticket. It felt like it, though. So, last Friday, Kathy Sullivan, my oldest daughter and I, were over at the Roca Park doing some cover shots for their upcoming, their upcoming magazine. And one of our props was a horse, perfect for Southwest Ranches. So, the horse gets there late, we do the shoot, it's getting dark out, and I said to Kathy, you going to ride the horse back? Oh, no, you're going to drive the horse back. And I looked at her and I said, this is only a three-quarter ton, my pickup truck. So, she goes, no, 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 we're going to walk the horse alongside the truck. I'm like, hope it doesn't kick, blah, blah, blah. So, she rolls down the window, she's got the lead, and we're driving along at about 11 miles an hour, because that's what the horse is trotting at. And we pull out on Mather, coming in the other direction, there's a police car. Like, yeah, so what do we just do now? He pulls up, stops in the middle of the road, blocks traffic. I'm like, let's see, aiding or bedding? What did I, what laws did I just break? He comes walking over really fast, and I'm, I don't know what to say. Kathy, let me handle this. Hi, officer, I'm the president of Rolling Oaks. Like, yeah, that's a great way to start. He comes over, and he goes, is that a horse loose? No. Shows him the lead, you know, in the car. So, he comes over, and this was the important part. He goes, I thought the horse was loose, I was going to stop him and do whatever it took to take, to keep you guys safe. Really. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's where they deserve a hand. And, you know, he just, he said, I was really concerned, and we said, boy, you guys are a lot different than BSO. They were great, but wouldn't have expected this out of them. So, again, I think you guys made the right decision. I'd love to see a Southwest Ranches police force. I agree with Dee, but, you know, these guys are the next best thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Item number six, board reports. Any members of the board here have any, any business? Astor? Oh, it's all right. Bob, Astor?
Mayor and council, as you know, this time of the year, we try to give some idea of what we have done in the past year for the Astronite Parks Foundation. We had, I think, a pretty good year. You have the figures before you. We had an income from operations last year, $39,032. We had expenses of $11,079. We gave, then does an income of, profit rate of $17,953. Now, the operating expenses, which includes what we have given to the parks, that total is $22,291.
Twenty-two thousand, two ninety-one.
Yeah. Okay.
Twenty-three, two ninety-one.
If you show, below that, you see a net loss of $5,338. That means that we took money out of what we had before to supplement what we got to give for this, the operations for this year, for that, for this, for last year. So, it shows an income loss of $5,000, but that's not really a loss.
Right.
Okay, if you look to the next sheet, which is a good sheet, and that shows that we in our balance in the bank is $28,259.
Great. Thank you, Astor.
So, that is the operations for last year, at least building on the prior years. Hopefully, this year, we should see much better income. We have events planned for April and October so far, and hopefully the barn will be finished, and you'll be able to use that place for our future events. So, thank you very much, and that's what the organization has been doing, and you hope to do much more. Thank you.
Thank you, Astor.
I was hoping that the town administrator can give us an update on the town engineer. Like the historical society, we would rather not meet and consume town resources until we've got the right person in place, so just hoping you're going to give an update tonight, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Hi, Melissa.
Hi. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, and just let everybody know that we do have another scholarship food truck fundraiser event planned for April 5th, and I'm hoping everybody will come. It's been a lot of fun, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, not just from our residents being a nice community event, but even our surrounding communities have come out and supported it, which is really nice. I also wanted to let everyone know, there are flyers for both in the back with the Davie Orange Blossom Festival. There will be tickets that we're selling, and the cost of the tickets will be split, the ones that we sell, with half going toward the scholarship fund.
Very nice.
So, yeah, so that, and if anyone's interested, they can contact Juanita for those tickets, and like I said, we have flyers for both in the back of the room. And I'm looking forward to getting final approval on the tweaks that we've made to the application later this evening, and I'm here if there's any questions. Thank you.
Any other board members? That concludes item number six. Item number seven, council member comments.
Doug, you want to go? Freddie?
Good.
Freddie?
Yeah, I'll go.
I got one or two comments.
Okay, I'll bring you update on the fishing hole, first thing. Finally, we're almost ready to close out the playground project. There's a few little things that Benny hadn't done out there, but there's not that much, I think. You're pretty real ready to pay them off, I think. But it's, it's looking pretty good. This rain has been real good for us with the grass and everything, so that's looking real good. The bathroom job has been signed now, and is getting ready to be ordered. We're looking forward to that. I was out there with Vernon, and we went over some of the other ones, and we plan to have a meeting later on on that. Today was my day for MPO. A week ago Friday, a week ago tomorrow, I guess it was, I think it was that, I had a day seminar over at the beach with, on this street smart. And actually, when I went there, it was an all-day thing, and most of the first of the morning, they get a presentation. And actually, what this street smart is, is really what they can do to control traffic and everything on streets. And the presentation, he-
And the presentation he gave us sounded like the guy that we hired just went and took his presentation, because it was almost all the same, you know, striping and almost everything. But the good part of it is, there's a lot of available grants through this program. In fact, as I gave Emily the information of the lady, there's a meeting next week, and I imagine Emily will be there, where they're gonna be discussing these grants. And from what I understand, from what the girl told me today, this is gonna be very rapid, they gotta get these grants out. But everything that we need to do, it looks like there's grants to do that, so it's some good news on our part. While I'm talking about the street smarts, I attended the meeting we had here on our street problem that Steve held, and I was impressed, it was real well. One of the things was, there was a young fellow sitting there in the back of the road, after everything was discussed, he brought up a subject that I think is really important. Like he said, everything we were doing, what we've done in the past, has been towards speed and everything, but really, the emphasis we need is the amount of cars that's traveling on the streets. Which brings me back to one of my old projects when I was here in 2000, and back in again is 184th Avenue. You know, we have two outstanding resolutions on this. One of them is to go out and see where we can get funding for doing that. What I would like you people to give Andy permission to do, or whatever we gotta do, you know, we've talked about 184th, and in my opinion, attended every meeting, there's a lot of people out there who's very interested in this. But what we really need to find out is how much money we're talking about. And I would like to see us to give our town administrator the instructions to get a company to go out and see actually what a two-lane road would cost us to put in. And also, we would need somebody, maybe our own people, and Michelle's office could tell us, there's an outstanding plat on 29 acres of that property called the Downey Plat. Downey Property, I think it's the Terra Plat, I forget the name of the plat, but I got a copy of it. There's a good chance, when that man pulled that plat in 1965, I think it was, maybe it was '95, he pulled the plat to develop 16 homes, lots on that property. At that time, he was required to put up $600,000 to put in the road and relocate that canal. He never put the bond up, but the plat's still outstanding. In fact, is, I got the plat when I was on the council before, and I had to go to their archives to find it, but it's still an outstanding plat. There's a good chance that that gentleman, he's got signs up there, he wants to develop that property, would have the responsibility to pay for a section of that road and everything. Because the good news is, like I put in my newsletter, that canal, that was in the wrong place, that has to be replaced, is not a canal anymore, really, because it's cut off at Griffin Road, it does not go into C-11. And I've talked to our drainage districts, and their plans are to put in some type of a drainage system, nowhere near as expensive as what the canal would be. So what I'm saying is, what we need, I think, we need to talk about this, and I don't think we can talk about it till we know exactly how much money we're talking about. And I don't think it would cost a lot of money just to get an estimate, you know, get it. In other words, when I did my newsletter, I went to Wheatley and asked Troy, and he just gave me a ballpark figure. What he did, he took 208th, which he's putting in now, he said, "Which is about a third of the difference," he's doing that for a million. He says, "A ballpark figure, I would figure it'd be around $3 million." But that's not the figure. We need a figure of somebody that says, "I can put this road in for you for X amount of money." And then we need somebody to tell us how much money would Downey have to put up, and then we could really theoretically look at something and see if it's feasible, and how soon it would be feasible. So what I'm asking you people for tonight is to give our town administrator, I don't know if we really need to do that, but I would like to do it that way, to go out and get us that price, so in the future, we could, when we're talking about this, we know exactly what we're talking about. That's all I got.
Freddie, I don't mind supporting you on that. The only concern I have is that, you know, I don't see us having any money to throw at that any time in the near future, but I'll support you as far as asking the administrator to get the information and have any idea what that would cost, so.
I, you know, you say you don't see any possibility in the near future.
For us to pay. Referring to the town having the money to contribute.
Yeah, well, Doug, what I'm saying, we really don't know until we see the price. But say it does come in around $3 million, there's a possibility that there's some way you could work that out. You know, say we could do it in 10 years or something like that, or maybe we can go to our two cities. If we got a price, we can go to somebody and start talking.
That's why I'm supporting you as far as getting a number, but I think $3 million's way off the million. The number I heard way back was at least 10.
Listen, I don't have any problems. You'd probably be able to come up with some kind of an estimate, Andy, and who knows? Listen, you know, depending upon what direction, pieces of the puzzle could fall into place, the stars could align, I mean, there's all kinds of potential scenarios that could happen. And it's always good to have information readily available if something like that comes along, so. You finish, Freddie? Okay. Gary?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody for coming. Good evening. I'll be very brief, as usual. Just a couple of announcements I'd like to make. First one being, we've got one coming up here, Water Matters Days in Treetop Park. That's gonna be March 8th. December does a really, really great job, and everybody needs to go out there and see that. I mean, she really, and with a lot of staff help and a lot of supportive volunteers, and it's something that everybody needs to really see. And they got a lot of Chotsky stuff, you know, from rain gauges to fruit trees that they give away. And it's really a nice thing to see. We have, the Education Advisory Board has their food truck event on the 5th of April. The Hawks Bluff Elementary has a food truck event on the 17th, and these are all at the Equestrian Park. And then we have the Parks Foundation on the 26th with the Chili Cook-Off. And so I want to make sure everybody gets that. It's all in the month of April. So it's going to be very active at that park, which is really nice to see. And I just want to respond to one of the comments made earlier today, is Dee here? No, okay. I did see one of the Southwest Ranches police cars. It is big, it is plastered on the side of the car on the bottom, and it is large, it was in Rolling Oaks today, so I just want to say that they're out there, they're slowly coming online with the paint schemes, and it was, it looked nice, it looked good. And I'll conclude with that for now, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Freddie, you stole a little bit of my thunder, but that's okay, I appreciate it.
Sorry.
No, no, not at all, I appreciate it, it's good, it's good to hear. So I did want to give a little bit of an update on the traffic workshop that we had for the area between 185th and 190th. Emily is working on that, coming up with some costs for the immediate issues. You know, if you were at the workshop, or if you're not, the, there was, all of the recommendations were divided up into different timeframes, those things that could be done immediately, more interim, or really short-term, and then interim, and then long-term. And so we're working on the immediate ones first, Emily is getting some quotes on that. We do have a vendor, Weekly, that is right on board, that we could go with, but I do think it makes sense to spend a little bit more time, bid it out, make sure that we get the right price. But I'm really hoping that, and this is where I need Andy to listen in just for a second, that I'm really hoping that by April 1st, that we are starting to see some things really happening in that process, so that the residents can start seeing some improvements out there. So I'm real excited about that. I do want to touch on the 184th topic. I was very pleased in this workshop, the, kind of the conversations back and forth regarding 184th, and there was a number of folks there from Rolling Oaks, and certainly, I'm not speaking for them, they are wonderful people and are able to vocalize their thoughts much better than I can. But I was very pleased in their conversations and things, that they were open to thoughts along 184th and what options might be available. So that, I was, I wanted to thank them for showing up and to being there, and to being really open to different conversations. I think, I think where we are getting towards on that is the fact that there may be a consensus towards one lane in each direction. We've talked about some significant birmingham there to make sure that the traffic noises and things like that are covered, and that the impact to those neighborhoods on both sides is minimized. And we're also talking about having a, the two areas, the one area next to Griffin and the one area next to Sheridan, to be able to kind of funnel the traffic together so that it's more acceptable to the traffic engineer gurus that are out there in the world, and kind of get over some of their obstacles and the things that they are concerned about. So that's very good. I do believe that, you know, where there's a will, there's a way, and frankly, even beyond that, I think that someday, whether or not, whatever our stance is for it, it will be put in there, and it behooves us as a town to guide the process and make sure it gets put in a way that is acceptable to the residents of our town than otherwise, in which case it may be forced upon us by other folks and put in a way that we're not comfortable with. So I think we're on the right path, I'm really excited about it. I think that there are some funding options out there, and I do think, I do think we've taken some big steps forward on that. And, and so Freddie, I do, I do agree with what you're saying, that, you know, we should move forward with that. My thought is, is that before we can get a reasonable estimate, and I'm not an engineer, so I'm, you know, I'm open to be convinced another way, but I do think that probably the first thing we need to do is, and I'm not talking about detailed drawings down to, you know, what the curb's gonna look like and things like that, but I do think we need a high-level sketch of what the road's gonna be look like, so that we can give it to viable bidders on that, and get a, so we're comparing apples to apples, it's not just, you know, one contractor's impression versus another contractor's impression, that we actually have a high-level set of plans. So I do think that's actually the place to start, is to get a high-level plan put together, so that then we can get those costs that you're talking about, Freddie, which I think is critical. And like you said, there'll be some things, like the Downey Property, that I think might be able to work right into that and make it work, so. I'm excited about it. I think, I think this is another one of those things that's been a challenge with us since we've been a town. And, and that I really feel very good that, you know, our residents as a whole are coming together, and in a spirit that is, frankly, is really heartwarming to me, and I mean that sincerely, that residents are really looking at it. Yes, they understand how it's gonna impact them, but they also understand that they've got neighbors that it's gonna impact them as well, you know, in another way. And it's really good to see that I think we're really coming together in that way in a community, so, real excited. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Couple of things. First of all, congratulations, Marty, your daughter, being accepted to Florida State, gonna be a future Seminole, that was great news recently. That's for sure. Now, just, hey, listen, you gotta give them credit where credit is due. And again, Dee, congratulations on your newest granddaughter, the Schroeder family. I heard the baby is absolutely beautiful, and absolutely. We talk about this all the time, health and family, and a few friends here and there, everything else falls into place, and congratulations again. What I'd like you all to do also, and contemplate in the process, I'm gonna take a minute or two and just update you on something that happened this last week, if you're not aware, you be aware, then that was our deposition, Keith's deposition and my deposition was taken this last week in the lawsuit against the City of Pembroke Pines. What we would like to do as a result of that, is we've got some things to talk to you about. I will tell you that things went very well. And as a result of those depositions, I'd like to schedule a shade session sometime here in the very near future. And the sooner, I think, probably, the better. So even if we're not ready right this second, just take a look at your calendars, whatever is convenient for you guys in the next couple of weeks, unless you're ready to do that now, and I know Andy's wants to, he might have actually was gonna talk about this as well as part of administration comments. In fact, while we're here now and talking about it, does anybody have any suggestions? This shade session that I'm recommending, Andy, as a result of mine and Keith's deposition being taken last week, we have some things that we need to talk about.
Yeah, actually, Mayor, it was something I was gonna cover after, happy to address it now while you're bringing it up. I had identified some target dates.
Okay.
To run by you, so that we can announce that meeting tonight, so I want to make sure we're all clear.
Mayor, if I might?
Absolutely, Mr. Brady.
The Office of Town Attorney needs to have a shade meeting with the council in order to discuss the issues of settlement and costs of litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. That's even better.
Jim, thank you for putting that on the record. Tentative dates I've identified for you to get together, in looking at the town calendar to make sure that dates were clear, we didn't have conflicts, I've identified Monday, February 24th, and then into the following week, March 4th, 5th, or 6th, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. And so we get consensus from council now, we can go ahead and advertise that, notice it as we need to do. I'm good.
Monday, the 24th, I don't have an issue with that either.
I'm good. Councilmember, breakers?
You have to be, I mean, if it's not, let us know, we'll just switch it.
I would prefer the weeks, the following week, to be honest with you, but I might be able to switch things around to make the 24th if the other ones don't work.
Okay, because we do need to announce that date tonight.
Is, how does, how does anybody feel about the?
Because we don't have another public meeting in order to announce that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, oh, okay. Well, what I'm saying is, I would prefer the 4th, 5th, or 6th, is what I would, would be my preference, but if that's not gonna work for everybody else, I think I can...
Depends on the rest of council.
Maybe the 4th, is the 4th an option?
Yes, 4th is an option for me.
I can do it.
Good for you, Gary.
I'm good. 4th, good for you, Steve.
Doug?
I'm good.
What, what time?
We'll start at 6:00 PM.
6 o'clock's good.
6 o'clock?
So we're looking at Tuesday, March 4th, at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, in that Weekly's Pavilion? Stand back, Weekly's Pavilion gathering.
Actually, if we could push this meeting back to, that's from 5 to 7, if we push this from 6 to 7, we can stay with the same night.
Good. He's 5 to 7.
That's what he's saying, start here.
So we'll start here at 7:00 PM.
Start here at 7.
Instead of 6, we'll start at 7.
Okay.
For those of you who choose to attend that.
Okay.
We'll be able to do so, and then we'll come over here and start at 7.
Okay, so 7 o'clock on the 4th. Weekly's showing us their pavilion that they built up at the corner on the 4th between 5 and 7.
That's his party night.
Yeah. But we'll start, so we're gonna do it that night, we're just gonna start at 7 o'clock.
Right, we'll start at 7 instead of 6, so we'll leave there and come over here for our meeting. I thought I had that on my calendar. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I had that on my list for later.
Tuesday, March 4th, 7 o'clock. Okay?
Mayor?
Yes?
I didn't mention these two things that I'd like to mention, if you don't mind. I got a notice from FDOT that they're having a, I have a 595 meeting on, let's see what that date was. It's on Thursday, the 27th of February, at the Signet Jan, that's the same night of our council meeting, I think. But, and it's on the two, the lanes, the divided lanes, but the meeting is from 5 to 7:00 PM. We might want to, you know, say, excuse one person from the council meeting, I'll be happy to attend or whatever, but I'd...
I'll be happy to attend or whatever, but I think that it's that section between Griffin Road and 595. They're not, I don't think they're talking about the park and ride, but I think we needed to tend all the meetings on that particular section, you know. And I just got that in the mail today. And I got another one in the mail where, from them, on Flamingo Road, they're gonna replace the guardrail on the west side from Flamingo all the way from Griffin Road to Pembroke Road. The guardrail on Flamingo Road. I'd mentioned those during my time.
Thank you, Freddie. Okay, any other? That concludes council member comments, item number eight. Mr. Brady, anything of any significance with the exception of the shade session?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you, all of you, for the hospitality you've shown, showed me coming in and I expect and hope going out.
Absolutely. It's great to have you there, Jim. Great to have you. Item number nine, administration comments. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, also, I'll also be brief, just a couple of things tonight. One is the School Education Advisory Board. There was some conversation before about the upcoming food truck event. Couple of things I just want to touch on, certainly on behalf of that board. One is, in, certainly in further partnership of our relationship with Davie, the School Education Advisory Board has been presented the opportunity to sell tickets to the upcoming Orange Blossom Festival over in Davie. The tickets are $18 to attend the rodeo. If you buy it in advance through the School Education Advisory Board, half of that money, $9 of the 18, goes into the scholarship fund. So it's a, a real nice thing, and I know Juanita has those tickets. So should anybody be so inclined, they're available at a moment's notice. Further item on the School Education Advisory Board, they're coming into their, their second year now of giving out scholarships. And there were some, you know, you, you worked through the, the kinks with those kinds of things, and there were some questions raised last year in how those, what those scholarship dollars were to be utilized for. And, and so the concern was, was that we wanted to be a little bit more clear on what was an acceptable expense. And so the consensus, the recommendation that's come from the school advisory board, which I just want to run through you and make sure everybody is okay with that, so they can go forward to start, start promoting, is that scholarships that are rewarded can go to educational institution, they can go to the bookstore at the institution itself, or it can be used after the fact as reimbursement for the following expenses: tuition, dorms or off-campus rent, food plans, books and school supplies to include computers and electronics that are needed, student activity fees, parking fees, and lab fees. And so that's the way we're, we're setting it up. We'll have, we'll have a little bit more accounting to do with that, but that's certainly not terrible. And I just want to make sure that this council is on board with those guidelines for the advisory board to go forward with, with their scholarship.
Anybody have any issues with, with that thought?
No, Keith had had, Keith's recommendations were that he thought it should go strictly to the school and whatnot, and it was under the impression we'd get far better, larger donations and contributions. Unfortunately, a lot of families don't have the money and they need it for other issues, whether it be the books or the laptops or computers or parking or other, or other fees. So that's why the board had come up with, they'd rather have a different option in as far as applying that money for the student in different areas. So that, the board was unanimous on, on having that. Gary, Gary attends them, so anything else you want to throw in on this, so.
That certainly makes sense. Gary?
Yeah, we're good. No, I'm just echoing Doug. Basically, it pretty much covers the spectrum and helps kids out.
Steve?
Yeah, just real briefly, you know, I'm, I'm not overly concerned about it. I know the, the bright futures, when it came in for, for my girls, it was a check went in their checking account, you know? So direct deposit, so they were able to use it really for virtually anything. And, you know, so long as the food plan includes pizza on Friday night, I'm on board. Because that's, that's, that's a key to a good student, being able to get good grades, is a good pizza every once in a while. So I'm, I'm good with it.
Ditto, ditto.
And, you know, let me just say that, you know, I, I know the board put a lot of time and effort into it and so, you know, what they came up with I think is fantastic and definitely supporting.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank you all for your consent. I know they're, they're certainly anxious to get those applications out there, so they'll be able to do that starting tomorrow. And the only other item I have is kind of a two-part, one is I want to update you, as, as Bob Hartman had brought up, I had on my list, update you on the, the search for a town engineer. I will tell you that although the position remains advertised, we've, we've done it as, as we've posted it as open until filled. We did our first review last week of the, the applications, the resumes that had been received. We scheduled three interviews. We had two interviews yesterday. We had a, a third today. At this point, we still got a little bit more work to do, but I'll tell you, we got, we got three candidates who, who could step in and do, do the job. It's a question of making sure that we, we try to select somebody who's gonna be a good fit for our town. But we've asked about project management, construction management. We've asked about drainage experience. We've asked about roadway repaving experience. So the things that are near and dear to our hearts, the, the problems, the challenges that we have here, you know, whoever we ultimately bring onboard is gonna have that, that experience and that expertise. So, you know, hopefully we'll be able to move through this process reasonably quickly. It's, it's certainly in our best interest all around to get somebody onboard as quickly as we can. But that leads me to really the second part of this, and that's what, I, I really wanted to say a very special thank you to Emily McCord, who has worked very hard in not only doing her day-to-day job, which she really does an outstanding job with, but she's riding herd on the engineering aspect and keeping our consultants at Winningham Fradley in line. She's working with consultants on some other projects. So she's, she's been Emily, she's been Willie. And in case that's not enough, as complicated as the transfer was from BSO to Davie, well, who wrote the grants for the equipment that we, that we had purchased that BSO had? That was Emily, so she's coordinated with BSO, bringing that equipment back and working with the quartermaster from Davie to get all that equipment out to them as well. So she's done an outstanding job, and I just, I wanted to thank her publicly for that. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy.
Mayor, I want to jump in and add to that just a second. Since the engineer job was open and out there, I had to give a call to Carl Huntsberger, who was here previously, since he was having all that hail, snow, and ice up in, the Carolinas up there. I called him and left him a message. I said, you know, you're having all that bad weather. I think you need to come down here and thaw out a little bit. Anyhow, I haven't heard back from him yet, but I did give a phone call and let him...
Yeah, Mayor, may I say something? Andy, I'm pretty sure that was one of your questions. It's gonna be a local residence, and we know these transit don't stay with us too long.
We'll be very sensitive to commuting time.
Okay. That concludes item number nine, administration comments. Item number 10, ordinance, second reading, Erica.
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the schedule of capital improvements for fiscal year 2014 through 2018 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, this is second reading on this ordinance. We had first reading, previous, at a previous council meeting. It's, it's really just an annual update to the plan. There was, I'll say, very little discussion, if any, or questions on it at the, at the last first reading. And so we don't have a presentation scheduled, but Emily is available if there are questions on, on this item.
Thank you, Andy.
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Motion is second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Vince? Absolutely.
Vince Valletta, my address is on record. What I had to address as far as this item, I understand that there's $100,000 for drainage and infrastructure in this particular capital improvement. We have a project which everyone tells me that they have approval for completion or for going forward, the pipe in Thoroughbred Lane in Palomino. The cost of that, putting in that pipe is $70,000. No disrespect to the people that designed it, but it's an unnecessary expenditure. I did the same thing on my property 30 years ago in order to increase the radius of the turn and also increase the area. And it doesn't have to be with the pipe. The reason the pipe has to be put in is because someone wanted the area extended and they couldn't put in an extension pipe because central power criteria says that the pipe is too small. Right now, it is too small for the drainage district. If you're gonna do anything to the pipe, then you'd have to replace it. And that's why the project is for a replacement of the pipe. But again, it's unnecessary. I'm glad to sit down with any engineer, any administrator, and you can do that at one-third the price and accomplish the same thing without having to spend $70,000. I brought this up more or less in committee, but they keep saying that that's the number-one project. And I, and no, I'm not trying to remove the, the project. It's that, if it has to be done, it could be done for less taxpayers' money. And like I said, I'd sit down with any engineer or any administrator and tell them how they could do it. Thank you.
Always interested in saving taxpayer money. Thank you, Vince. Any other public comment on this item? See, no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. We have a motion is second to approve. Counsel, any questions? Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Physic Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Andy, did you want to flip these items around?
Yeah, Mayor, we have item 11 and 12. 11 is the discussion on retirement options. 12 is the RRB asset litigation. 12 would be presumably a much more brief discussion. So if you wanted to move that forward first, we could put that one to bed before the other item.
I don't have a problem with that, counsel.
Make a motion to switch those two items?
Second.
Motion and a second to switch the items. I know that there isn't any members of the public wish to have any objections to this. Erica, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Physic Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item 11, 12 have been switched. Item number 12, a discussion, update on the resource recovery fund. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The reason I wanted to put this on the agenda is, as you recall, the county has agreed to move forward with mediation on the assets of the Resource Recovery Board. The first session is set for next Thursday, the 20th. They've booked all day over at the EOC.
I'll say, I'll make it easy for you. I picked the mayor.
Well...
Or, or you.
Actually, what they're, what they've, what they've asked for is us to designate a representative to send out to that meeting. They've, they've, I'll say, intimated that the, they would prefer that it's an elected official. It does not need to be. This is going to be an all-day session. I have no realistic hope that there'll be any movement towards a settlement during the discussion. Should you wish to designate me to attend on behalf of the town, I'd be happy to do that. You know, recognize, we're one of 18 municipalities on, on the side of this litigation. We represent about 0.8% of the, of the tonnage at stake, so we're, we're a fringe player at best. Certainly, any one of you would be welcome to attend and spend the day over there with me. I'd be happy to have you. But should you elect to do so, I'd be happy to attend on behalf of the town.
I don't, I don't have any problem with that, and especially in light of this last week or so, missing a, missing a few days. So I certainly don't have any problems with that, counsel.
I think it's a great idea.
I think, I think it's a great idea.
Never turn down a volunteer, that's what I...
That's right. Freddie, okay? Doug, okay?
Yep.
I'm okay.
All right. I know you do a great job representing our interests there, Andy. Okay, item number 12, that was switched from 11, discussion retirement options. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just kind of, kind of start this off. This is, this is an item that came up during Marty and I's, our annual review. It was an opportunity for us, obviously, when you look at our, our job performance and our compensation, we had made a request for some retirement funding to be added to our benefit package. That week, and, and, you know, that week, there was a, a late request, and I'm gonna talk about that again for, for a different item that, that, that came on board. So there really, there are, there are three options that would, I'll say, be on the table for your consideration tonight. One would be maintain the status quo and not do anything. The second item would be the ICMA 401 Plan that Marty and I had, had originally brought forward. The third item, which is FRS, is the Florida Retirement System, which is the one that I alluded to as a late arrival. Before that, that, that meeting, two meetings ago, Councilmember McKay had asked us for some information on FRS, which we pulled together as much as we could in as short a time. If you recall, as part of your deliberations, you really didn't have enough time to process and consider that information. So our directive from you at that point was to kind of reschedule it for later discussion, pull more information together for you. You know, we have done that, we've shared that with you. Marty has some additional information, which I know Erica just gave to you, and I was gonna turn it over to him just so he can outline. Obviously, item one, if we maintain the status quo, we have no presentation for that, there's no change. For the ICMA or the FRS, Marty was gonna talk a little bit about the differences for you prior to any deliberations you'd care to have.
Good evening. Thank you, Andy. This item is up for discussion tonight, is obviously, as Andy mentioned, is a, is a deferral from the executive compensation decision on January. Tonight, we have in the agenda as a four-page detailed package, basically, the presentation comprises two types of programs, a defined contribution plan and a defined benefit plan. The defined benefit plan being the Florida Retirement System, and the defined contribution being an ICMA Retirement Corporation program. Rather than go through the detailed four pages, I know a lot of people have been prepped with the agenda, Andy and I have handed out a summary. I do have some in the back that I handed. I have some extras here if anyone wants to follow, which are basically the differences between the two types of plans. The defined benefit plan is the middle column, the characteristics, which is FRS, and the ICMA is on the right-hand side, the defined contribution plan. Now, the, the fundamental differences between defined benefit and defined contribution plans are basically who bears the investment risks and rewards. In a defined benefit plan, investment risk and reward is borne by the plan sponsor. That is the employer and FRS. Under defined contribution plans, in contrast, the investment risk and reward is placed on the employee. So the key factors up for discussion tonight are the plan features, characteristics. You can see, under benefit determination, the defined benefit plan, the FRS program, is based on an annuity benefit-based formula, which is in effect a guarantee. The, the employee receives a guarantee at the end of their years of service. The defined contribution plan, the actual benefit determination is based on the value of their account balance with no guarantee. The funding, since 2011, a 3% employee contribution is mandatory within FRS, as well as an employer contribution is required. The same characteristics are generally comprised under a defined contribution plan. The variable costs are also the same, a percentage of pay. They can be fixed, but for comparative purposes, we have percentage of pay. Underfunding, that was one of our questions we addressed, that legal addressed, and under a defined benefit plan, underfunding is common. Very rarely do you find a defined benefit plan that is either 100% or greater than 100%. It can happen. In the package, you will note that the Florida Retirement Systems Program is one of the top strongest in the nation's retirement plan with a 87%, close to an 87% funded rate that ranks at number nine. In, in the exhibit, you will see basically the top 10 states in the nation. In the exhibit, you will see, basically, the top 10 states in the nation. Those that have a green shade are well above the Morningstar rating. We've all heard of Morningstar rating. They're one of the national investment research firms, and they consider a funded ratio of 70% or greater as fiscally sound. And the Florida Retirement System is almost 87%. It has exceeded 87% for quite some time. So in terms of soundness and stability, you really can't get any stronger with the Florida Retirement System. Now, moving on to transparency and bond concerns, of course, the defined benefit has those concerns, whereas a defined contribution would not. The responsibility for investment and risk and reward, that's the key component. The employer, that's the town, and the FRS bear the risk of the investment and risk reward, whereas the defined contribution plan, it's strictly the employee. It's what the employee invests and chooses determines what their balance will be at the end. Are there any early retirement subsidies? Yes, there are for the FRS. However, there is a penalty prior to age 65, and the defined contribution plan does not have any subsidies. Are there any COLAs? That's cost of living allowances. Both do not provide for cost of living allowances post July 1st, 2011. The investment decision-maker, reiterating the risk and reward, that's the Florida Retirement System under the FRS, and under the defined contribution plan, ICMA, it's the employee traditionally. Leakage is a term they use. That is, are the loans permitted under FRS? No. Under ICMA, yes, if allowed by the plan. Portability may be an issue. It is limited under FRS because, obviously, the credit for service for participants can only be obtained from an FRS participant, whereas a defined contribution plan, it has unlimited portability. Disability and death protection, FRS has yes, whereas ICMA does not. Again, it's limited to your account balance. So that's a quick recap of the difference, the characteristics, major characteristics of the ICMA versus the FRS. Along with that, I'd like to give you, basically, a characteristic, the most important factor, which you asked from the January meeting, was to also include in the employees due to facilitating the, and aiding in the attraction and retaining of quality professional personnel for the staff. So that's also a key factor tonight of the consideration of a retirement plan. Along with that, in page three of the agenda package, I have three other components that are very important with the difference between FRS and ICMA. And one was with employees attracted or most benefit. With an FRS, the tenure is usually longer and are older employees, whereas under ICMA, generally, the employees attracted are shorter-tenure employees and or younger employees. The tenure patterns are encouraged under FRS are longer because employees receive the greatest benefit accruals at the end of the long-time service. What the trend has been under FRS is that it locks people into jobs that they would otherwise leave, whereas under ICMA, that the employees are receiving salaries based, receiving benefits, excuse me, based on their salary, not tenure. And this may actually encourage employees to change jobs in order to receive access to a lump-sum distribution from their retirement accounts. So that's a risk we take under an ICMA. And under the opportunities, FRS has a restriction, that no pre-retirement access to accounts are provided, whereas ICMA, that pre-retirement access in the form of loans is often provided. So that's a key consideration. Moving into our analysis, and I would like to open it up to questions, if you have anything and you'd like to ask anything as we go along, but the attachment B has our detailed analysis. That's the exhibit of two options within the ICMA towards the left, and then the FRS options. The option one under ICMA provides for the, an executive plan and a general employee plan, and all this pursuant to your direction excludes elected officials or special risk personnel. Option number one has a 15% for executive, a 3% for all others, and based on our current compensation, I'd like you to move your eyes down to the bottom, because you requested also a three-year average versus a year-to-year average in red with a percentage averages as well as contribution on an annual basis, three-year average. Option one would cost the town on an annual basis $65,713. Option two, where we would consider a 15% to executive staff with 10% of all others, would cost on a three-year basis $104,945. And you could see from option one and two, they don't change from year to year. They stay consistent from year to year because the percentages stay the same for year to year. Moving to FRS, FRS is a three-year average. Andy and I have percentages that go back, going back to 1970, if anyone should look, and I have extra charts, but utilizing a three-year average is more appropriate, more current. A three-year average, the total cost for the town would be $57,039. And the three-year average under the senior management, senior management would only be the town administrator, on the Florida statute, three-year average is 10.29%, and the regular class, which would be all our other general employees, not including elected officials or special risk personnel, is 5.68%. That's all I have right now. I'd like to open it up for counsel discussion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Gary?
Yeah, I guess I'll lead off. A lot of information here, a lot of stuff to look at, a lot of assumptions being made, and we've done, I've done, speaking for myself, a considerable amount of reading and research on this. And normally, I'm pretty brief, but tonight, I'm not going to be brief. I've got some points to make, and I want to stay on point with most of it. So I'll try not to be redundant. I have a lot of concerns on the state system, what's euphemistically abbreviated, the FRS The contribution rates, they're set by Tallahassee. We have nothing to do with it. We have no control. We don't, we have no say in the system. A big concern is, once the town signs up, it cannot back out. You're in. You're in for the good, you're in for the bad, you're in for everything. You're locked in, and I got a real problem with that. I don't know of any investment I've ever made in my life where I can't get out of it faster than when I got into it. So that's a big concern of mine. I believe there's a, if we went with FRS, that there would be a real possibility that it would affect our budget in a negative way. What really concerns me is the eligible classes that come up. They can be expanded by a simple council vote. And who knows, you know, I got a lot of confidence in this council. We're a pretty good team. We're doing pretty good. But who knows what's going to happen five, 10 years from now? And you have to take all that into consideration when you're, you know, thinking this through. A future council would be able to put themselves in it. It would be just a simple 3-2 majority that can get it done, and I really disagree with that. I don't think that's why we're up here. I don't, you know, we got in here, we got up here to make a difference, keep our lifestyle, keep things simple. I see this as an expansion of going in the opposite direction, and I'm not real thrilled with this. The state program follows the organization and does not follow the individual like a 401 does. So 401, it's like a water spigot. You can turn it off and you can turn it on, you know, the flow. And I'm more comfortable with that than I am anything else. Another consideration is with the state system is, once an eligible class is put out, you really have no control over who can join. Anybody that's in that class, they can't be discriminated against or anything like that, and not saying that that's, you know, what we want to do or anything like that, but everybody gets to join, and it just costs the town more money. One of the examples that was given here, the one that Marty just read, and Marty has some really good information on the three-year averages and everything, but what I noticed was, if you took the first two years of the three years on the FRS system, the state system, it averaged $46,000, and then the third year, it jumps up to 78, which is a 60% increase in just this example alone. So that really determines how erratic and unpredictable it can be, you know, and I'm not real comfortable with that. You know, this town, this town is small, and it was formed to benefit the residents, keep our rural lifestyle, have control over our taxes, you know, and I'm not really sure that we can afford to join the state system. I'm okay with looking at a 401 and like a 5% or something like that, and I'm just throwing that number out there for discussion at this point, but I'm not okay, I'm not okay with the state, and I would not support the FRS or the state system. And I'd like to, but I'm sure he wants to wait and bring it up at the end if legal has any comments or anything on that, but, you know, everybody else probably wants to talk about it. And I'll conclude with that, that I'm not in support of the state system for our town. I think it's, I think it's too much for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Counsel? Andy? Steve?
I'll say more. I'll jump in there. I, you know, I'll say this, that I initially, I've kind of gone full circle with this, well, not full circle, I guess I've gone one direction, but, you know, I was not a big supporter initially of a retirement type of a program because I just, for some of the reasons that Gary has brought out, that I wasn't sure that we really, as a town, were in a position to really commit to it and things like that. As time has gone by, I have changed my stance from the, for a couple of reasons, that I think it is, two things really have stood out to me. One is that I think that it's important to provide for our employees, like we would expect wherever we work, to have some options for retirement. And I understand that when, you know, when you're a brand-new town, you might not be able to do those things, but I think we are growing up. I think we are becoming more than just a brand-new town, and I think that if we're going to, clearly, if we've learned anything in the last three or four years from an employee standpoint, we've learned that there's a market out there and employees, there's, it's a competitive market, and that we can lose quality employees if we're not careful. And it's tougher to attract quality employees without some retirement benefits there. So from those standpoints, from the fact that I really feel like we have grown up as a town, and the fact that I do feel that it's really, at this point, it's an obligation of our town to be a quality employer as well as a quality place to live, I do think that the retirement program is something that we need to take action on in one form or another. So I definitely would support a retirement program at this point, although, like I said initially, that wasn't my, that wasn't my initial stance, but. So given that, I've looked at both of these plans, and Gary, I had the same hesitations that you have. I am very uncomfortable with a program that, you know, you can get into, you can't get out of, and come, you know, and then the, you know, the combo there of, you can't get out of it, and oh, by the way, somebody up in Tallahassee is going to determine for you what that, what that cost is going to be. That's a very unsettling combination of the two. So like you did, Gary, I did a little research further on that to try and understand what goes into the variability of the number that's going to come out of Tallahassee. And actually, that gave me a little bit more comfort, kind of increased my comfort level a little bit with it, because it's based on performance, and you can see some things that, you know, the economy went through a difficult time, and that's why that giving rate increased. I also, in looking at the three-year averages and the examples given, the FRS actually would have had a smaller budget impact than the other options. So that made me think again as well. But at the end of the day, the thing that is, I don't think we can take our eyes off of why we're probably primarily having this discussion. And the reason why we're primarily having this discussion, I believe, is because we recognize that to retain and to recruit quality employees in the town, we've got to have a tool in place that's going to do that. I think that, as was pointed out in Marty's documentation there, that the ICMA may not even do that for us. So we're going to be spending money on a retirement program that in some ways encourages our employees to go elsewhere and to bump up their pay scale and to go elsewhere. So I have a real hard time with that, you know? I just don't, I think we've, you know, to, because of our lack of comfort, and I say "our" because I have it as 12, our lack of comfort with a number there that could vary out of our control, you know, it's tempting to go with the ICMA, but I think that could defeat the whole purpose of what we're trying to do. I don't think it's, I don't think it's the same thing. So I'll be honest with you, that led me back to the two things. One, the FRS historically has been less than the ICMA, and number two, the FRS historically accomplishes what we're trying to accomplish. And so, so at the end of the day, although it was initially my last choice, I come to you this evening with the FRS being my first choice. Doug?
Let me, let me take the hit initially for the FRS issue coming up, because when Andy and I first met in regards and discussing this, I had inquired and asked about it because I didn't know a whole lot about it. So the initial information was a little sketchy, and so that's why we came up to move it down the road, and here we are tonight discussing it. But, you know, is it the better item? Without, it's the Rolls-Royce. Let's say that. It's the Rolls-Royce in this arena. The other one would be the Cadillac. And the main fear factor for me, you know, the comment is, well, you budget for it. Well, that's all well and good. You can budget for it, but where's the money coming from? And is it in the budget now that we could do it? You know, we were over, we had money left over last year to the tune of $500,000 or $600,000. That's all well and good, but, you know, we have other things we're trying to do, and do we want to do things for the employees? Sure. Sure, we'd love to do things for the employees. But my biggest fear is putting something in place that we have zero control over and cannot turn off. That scares me to death. On the other side, on the other one, we can adjust it annually if need be. You know, we have, say, we can, we can make changes and we can do things. But if we jump in that FRS thing, from what we're getting tonight in this information, we have absolutely no way to get out. Slit your wrist. And you can maybe try to stop the bleeding, but you have no say. So would I love to be able to afford it and if somebody could show me going forward that we had the money for the next 20 years and be able to do it, you know, I'd probably be on board with that. But sitting here tonight, I don't think anybody can show us that or tell me that. And we can't count on winning lawsuits to, to pay that. So I've got to tell you, yeah, we want to do something for the employees here, but FRS is really, really scary. I mean, it's the right thing to do if we could afford to do it, but wow. So I've got to tell you, for me being the initiator of asking for that information, I've got to tell you that once I've got the information, I'm really afraid of it. So me personally, I don't know that I can support the FRS. I'm willing to support something else. I don't know what a percentage rate at or anything like that. I'm here, we're here to discuss it. But obviously, to keep good people, you got to offer more things. And we've known since we became a town, not offering stuff less at having people in second rate sometimes. But we've been very blessed to get a lot of first-rate people. One being Marty, we got Marty, but because it was closer to home, not as far a drive, a lot of other things came into play for Marty under the circumstances. But we've been blessed to have him and we still have him right now. But, and, and we were blessed to get Andy, and Andy being never been administrator, but having his experience, you know, he was a perfect fit for us. So that's wonderful and we'd love to keep him for a good long time. And God, I hope we do. So, but in moving forward and looking after the rest of everybody, I, you know, and Andy's in my conversations has been, look, you know, they'd love to take care of the top guys, but he'd love to take care of the, the people under it. So we've had a few conversations on this. So, you know, if we can find a tool or a mechanism amongst these items to make this work for us, you know, that we can adjust or, or change or modify, that we still have some control of, I'm in favor of doing something in that nature. But to, to jump into something that we have no control or, or have no say, I'm just, I can't do it at this time.
Thanks, Doug. Freddie?
Well, I've been thinking, everybody's been saying the same thing. When we come up with this, I think what Steve was saying and what my thought was, is what we can do to help our employees be satisfied here and stay with us. We've, we haven't had a real turnaround in some of ours, but in others we have. And I think if we're going to remain a town, we have to come up with something that will give them the opportunity to want to stay with us and where we can move forward. I don't blame a person that, that working here and they get an opportunity to, to better themselves to go there. If I was in the same position, I would. I would come up during the times when it, all this wasn't a problem and you were lucky to have a job, you just worked at a job. And I worked for a company that had a very simple retirement plan. You work for the company and at the end of the time, you got 1% of what, what your salary was for your retirement for every year you worked. And you never really thought too much about it till you got to the point where you looked at it. But when I look at what I get with retirement and I look at somebody's retirement that people are getting now scares the heck out of me. You know, there's got to be a happy medium somewhere that we can come up where we can help our employees. And I fully feel that it's going to have to be a plan that they take part of. I don't think we're a big enough town to incorporate some of these retirements where they, they have. So truthfully, I, I haven't, I don't like either plan. Or truthfully, mainly from what the same statement says, I don't like anything that people tell me what I got to do completely, you know? I wouldn't go out here and buy a car knowing that the next day, if I, if it blew up, I couldn't do nothing about it. They'd just tell me that stuff, you shouldn't have bought the car in the first place. And it's really, they're telling us with retirement plan, once you get in, you ain't getting out. And that's not good. So I'm hoping we can work out something. And I'm probably, probably the weakest one on this board as far as experiencing these type of things because with my experience, the company I worked for was a telephone company and everything was cut and dried. You really had not too much to say about it. You either, you, you worked at it and you look forward to the time you retired, you count up how many years, you figure out what you did and what you had to do. And, and that's one of the problems I have sitting on this board. Of people, I've been retired from the service there for 30-some years. And when you, when I look back at what I was making and what people are making today is making it very difficult for me making those decisions. So, and the same thing on the retirement. But my whole purpose, I talked about this when we talked about it before, was I'm looking for something that we could come up, that we can afford, that will help our people stay with us and, but I won't, I want to tell everybody that's working for us, I, I don't believe we can do it alone. I think it's going to have to be something like a 401K, something where it's going to be a combined effort. We just, I think when we all took this job on the council, we were making $300, they upped our salary a little bit, but I think we all took the job knowing that we were here just to try to help a city that we wanted to live in, and that's the case. I know it's not that case with our employees, they're here making a living. We're, I don't think any of us is living on our salary. If they are, I want you to tell me how that you're doing it. But, no, it's, it's a hard situation and I don't have the answer. I was hoping that we could get a little better answers than we got today, but from what I've seen in this book and what I've heard is, I don't see the answer yet.
Mayor, can I just?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of follow-up comments based on the other comments that I've heard. I just want to say, number one, I think the most important thing is that we do something. And I certainly am not, you know, sold on FRS, you know, or nothing. I'm certainly not there. I think we need to do something. So, you know, I'm hearing the intent of the council and I certainly don't, I, I don't disagree with that. One other thing that I did do a little research on, and Keith was helpful in this, I just want to make sure it's out there, is actually in our town charter, it specifically states that the council cannot, that no, no town funds can be used as for, for FRS. So, so as far as, you know, the council getting added in there, not an option, so.
And just to add to a couple of things, I got to tell you, we've come a long way to sit here and have this discussion because this is something that, you know, we hadn't contemplated and nor were we ever in a position to contemplate it. And as a result of, you know, we have outstanding employees. And there's no question that to retain outstanding employees, there's got to be benefits. When I say benefits, they got to be happy with where they are because if there's other options that provide better benefits, and it's not always a salary, but better benefits, we see what, what happens. One thing I do know though, with regards to this council, I sincerely believe that none of us would ever, 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 that's up here now, I believe, would ever, ever vote for retirement plan for, for ourselves. Everybody that sits up here now, I sincerely believe is up here and committed to serve this town because they want to preserve this lifestyle, this unique philosophy that exists here in the town of Southwest Ranches. And I, I think that everybody up here would do it for nothing. That's why we're here. We love this town, we love the people in this town, and we'll fight like hell to protect it. And that's why we're here. We're not up here to enrich ourselves financially. And I am sure, there's no question in my mind, that nobody up here would vote for retirement for themselves. I too have, with regards to FRS, and listen, I'm, work for the school board, we're in the FRS program. You do have two options, it's the defined contribution or the investment program. And, and let me also go on record is to say that we need to do something for our employees, no question about that. And with regards to that, I'm not sure, but one thing I am sure, from me and my perspective and how I feel, is that this town is not in a position to commit itself to FRS. And Doug, I know you had mentioned 20 years, but this, this town and its, you know, limited financial capacity, although there's a lot of things that are, that are going on that, you know, potentially could change things. But I could never commit this town in perpetuity to, to commit to a retirement program. I just, I couldn't do it. I just, I couldn't do it. Those implications bother me. There is no flexibility and that's probably the most important factor with regards to, to my decision. I just cannot commit this town in perpetu, to, in perpetuity with regards to a retirement program. I can't do that, I, I won't do that. I'm certainly, again, as I said and previously, in favor of coming up with something with our employees. With regards to the mechanism and the percentage, I want it to be something that is an additional incentive to not only the town manager, the finance director, the town clerk, but all the employees. I think that we do need to come up with something as not only an additional incentive, but confirmation that, that, you know, as a result of this benefit package that we offer, that they want to stay. And that's something that's very important to me. And again, we've got a, a great, great staff. I think this is probably the best that we ever had and never have had in the town of Southwest Ranches. Andy, you're just a superstar in, in my book and we're fortunate to have you. Marty, I've never, ever felt anything other than not only trust and confidence, but commitment as well because I know I see you over there till late at night. And certainly trust with, trust you with regards to everything that you're doing. We've never been in better hands when it comes to somebody taking care of our, of our books. And I say that from my heart and I mean that sincerely. And I want you to know that. With regards to our town clerk, I told her today that she, while she has resigned, there's a mechanism to go to her new place of employment. And if we tie her up and don't let her out of her office, she can't report to work. And as a result of that, she can't leave. So certainly contemplating some of those things to get her to stay and convince her to stay. With regards to everybody else, it just hasn't been any better, you know? Not only with regards to commitment and, you know, the ability to get along, it's like a family here, you know? I mean, it's just so important. I can't tell you, when you have that kind of atmosphere and environment where everybody's trying to help each other, supporting each other, working hard for each other, it just makes things that much more easier. So from my perspect, my perspective, this is just a great working relationship, a great family. What can we do to enhance it even more to say, thank you, and here's some additional incentive to, to stay here? And not only incentive, but you deserve it. We should certainly create a, a package over and above what salary is to ensure that, you know, there is a mechanism to say that I want to stay here. They care about him, they care about us, they made a commitment for us and I want to stay. With regards to what that is, I can tell you that I just can't support FRS. I can't. I just cannot bind this town in perpetuity from a financial perspective with regards to retirement. I just can't do that. But certainly want to do something. And I'm, you know, more inclined to support the 401A or something along those lines because I know that there are some options with regards to that, that program. What that percentage is and what we think is fair and, and in consultation with Andy and Marty and Erica, because I'm going to tie her up so she can't leave, you know, what that percentage is, I'm not sure yet. You know, I'm really not sure yet. But I think we all agree, we need to do something.
Can I ask Marty to run some numbers real quick? May I, Mayor?
Sure, absolutely, Doug.
Marty, under a 401 plan system?
Yes.
If you did yourself and Andy at 9% and the staff at 5%, required employees all 3% contribution, take a few minutes and tell me what that would work out to be.
Okay, 9% then?
9 and 5.
9, 5 and 3.
You and Andy at, at 9% and sta, the rest of the staff at 5%. And, and the staff has to contribute everybody 3%. Just run that number and give me an idea what that is.
When you say staff, you're including?
Everyone.
Andy and Marty as well, right?
No, no, yeah, as far as the contribution, yeah.
Can I just, to add, because the clerk position is so important to Doug, maybe?
I'll ask him.
Okay. No, I'm thinking of 9% for?
Absolutely. That would, that would make the three charter employees the same.
So put the clerk at 9% also.
Yeah.
Okay, give me a few seconds.
Not a problem.
Time's up.
You're cool.
Should ask for more.
Sounds like the boss talking.
Would we be out of order to listen to some of our audience and?
Well, it's a discussion item, but you're absolutely right. As I told, I told Jim tonight that when it comes to public comment and input, we violate Robert's rules with regards to that. And I know it's a discussion item and normally the public doesn't participate, but if there are members of the public again in violation of Robert's rules, recognizing that, but cherishing input from, from our residents, I'm going to do that anyway. So yes, absolutely, we would love, and I'm sure this council doesn't have any issues with that, you never have, with regards to your input and feedback.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. I'm wondering, I'm curious why the state's version of a 401A wasn't examined? Because when I worked for the state, I could have gone into the defined benefit plan, which I think I would have vested in six years and?
Eight years now, Paul.
Sorry?
It's, it was six, but it's eight years now. You're right.
It's eight years now?
Yeah.
And I wouldn't have been able to do anything until I turned either, I don't know, 62 or 65. The second plan is what I opted for because I knew it wasn't going to be at the state forever. And I was able to take that, I mean, I can take the money out with penalties and all that, but it's the same as a 401K. Why are we looking at the ICMA exclusively versus the, the FRS version of the same thing? Now, I don't know if you're locked in forever, but again, it's similar to the ICMA plan where it's defined contribution, not benefit. So something to think about.
I, I can answer that question.
But let's just, hold on a second, Marty, because there might be some other questions. Let's get through?
Okay, no problem.
The feedback from the public in violation of Robert's rules.
Good evening, Joanne Longsworth, 199th Avenue in the town of Southwest Ranches. You know, in the last couple of years, I've had some changes going on and I've had to make decisions I never thought I would have to make for people and got a little crazy. And a friend of mine said to me, and I was just thinking of that when it came to this, that there isn't anything you can't change or get out of. that there isn't anything you can't change or get out of but death and taxes. And I was thinking, but it never said death, taxes, and retirement fund. So, I am definitely against the FRS, and I would be interested in hearing about the 401K, but I think starting nine percent and five percent is too high for a start. So, that's my opinion.
I have a few comments. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Specifically, first off, no to FRS. Anything that you can't get out of, no. Anything where someone else is telling you how much you're going to have to take out of your pocket, no. Other things is that I don't think you have a full range of plans. You've got two plans here you're looking at, A or B. I think there's C, D, E, F, and G out there also, and each one's different. And each one should be looked at in their totality before making a plan change, not just two plans. Also, there's some thoughts that I'm thinking on this. The council needs to be able to freeze the contributions in an emergency fiscal situation for the next year. We saw this with the recession, where property values dropped, our income dropped. If we were in the FRS, they went up those years. So, you have this happening, and you get squeezed in the middle. I saw this with other municipalities. The next thing is, if we can freeze the contributions, it has to be by a supermajority or a majority, or a hundred percent vote of the council. It's not, so it's not willy-nilly, you know? The, it has to be a matching contribution plan. In other words, if you're putting in a hundred dollars, the other person has to put in a hundred dollars also. It can't be a single benefit contribution plan. If one person does not match your contribution, then you match their contribution up to a certain amount, and that's it. May I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
The system needs a percent contribution to be set by the council each and every year, every year. You may continue the same amount as the year before, but it needs to be set as part of the budget every year. The ability to freeze the contributions is an important part because there is the emergency fiscal situations that we're going to have, another recession somewhere down the road. They're not abnormal, they're cyclical in the United States. We're coming out of one, and we're going to be going back into one. It's just that roller coaster we ride, where we just don't know how close the loops are together. So, as long as we take a look at all of the options, not just two, but all of the options, and then choose among those, and then we have a defined benefit that you set every year on a matching contribution, every year you make that decision as part of the budget, we have this much money we're going to have, we can set this much money aside, and the employee has to match up to this amount. So, I hope that you will take those under consideration because the Florida retirement system is something you get in, and it's a bear trap around your leg, and if they make some bad financial decisions, as the board of directors of the FRS, you've got to send the money to Tallahassee to make up their mistake, and I've got to pay for you sending the money to Tallahassee to make up their mistake, and I don't want to be part of that. Thank you.
As far as doing something for the employees, I hope this town's going to be around for a hundred years. So, you're looking at a long-term plan, and I hear people knocking the FRS. I've been in the FRS since 1979. It's one of the best managed systems in the country. If you have a self-administered retirement plan, it leaves itself open to corruption. Where the FRS, maybe you can't get out of it, but still, it is one of the most, best-funded system in the country, as far as I know. And I don't think that you want to run into any debt like they had in California because of different retirement systems. And it is a fixed amount that you have to pay, and it's also a fixed amount that the employee must pay into the FRS. But at least you know you're in the system that's been around for, well, I've been in it for over, shoot, thirty years, and I also was in a private sector retirement fund. And that was administered by the retire, by the private sector, and then they went bankrupt. And you know, the retirement went with it, with the bankruptcy. So, I'm saying, don't knock the FRS if you don't understand it. Maybe you should inquire and understand it more, but it is, it is one of the best systems in the country. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in violation of Robert's rules like to make a comment on a discussion item? See no further comment in violation of the Robert rules on this discussion item. We'll turn it over to you all with any additional, my daughter, any additional comments. Doug?
No, I was just curious, Marty's got any answers to any of the questions the residents had and/or those numbers for?
Yes, the first issue is, Mr. Hartman is correct, the FRS component does offer for the employees an investment plan, what they call it, the investment plan or pension plan. However, it doesn't change the nature of the employer contribution amount or any of the individual components. It's basically transferring the risk. If an employee, if the town chose to go with FRS, they are basically shifting the risk to the employee. If the employee would choose to invest the way they desire, that's where the options come in. So, this analysis is all for the town cost implications, not for employee optional or options available. So, rather than co-mingle the investment plan versus the pension plan, has no significance in this analysis because it doesn't change any of the percentages that we would have to make. That's number one. Number two is, people have said 401K. It is a 401A, A for Apple, is the government letter designation for government agencies and entities, but it works the same way. The options provided on the 401A, you will have flexibility in state of emergencies, should the need come up. It would be subject to covenant to budget and appropriate, meaning that if you should choose and opt out of making a contribution, you have flexibility. So, that's the option you have available. So, ICMA happens to be the most well-managed, the lowest-cost operation, and that is why we're presenting ICMA strictly, the most, the most highest and best performance and the lowest cost to the town and to the employees.
Thank you, Marty. Good conversation, good constructive conversation. I think that it's.
I'm sorry, I forgot to give Councilmember McKay's request. I ran a few of them for your numbers. Here, write this down. Nine percent for executives and five percent for the town equals 57,362. Ten percent for executive and five percent for employees was 60,622. And ten percent for the executive and six percent for the employees would be?
The suspense is killing me, Marty.
I'm guessing about $62,500.
How many eggs are in the jar? How many beans in the jar?
Sixty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. So, that gives you a little leeway. We can, we can set any amount you desire. I'm assuming that you would choose in both plans, the two plans, that there'd be a three percent employee contribution on top of this, that this is only the employer portion.
Marty, if I can, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Marty, what would it be in a straight five percent across the board for everybody?
That would be?
With a three percent match, I mean, all things being equal.
We take the 886, 446, times point oh five, forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars.
Thank you.
Forty-four thousand what?
Forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. That's five percent across the board and a three percent employee match. Okay. I don't know if we're, we're certainly not ready. I don't believe to make a choice or a decision. I think that it's a very constructive conversation. I think it's obvious that we want to take care of our employees, and we need to do something. I think majority is not in favor of FRS. That doesn't mean that it won't change somewhere along the line as part of this process of the discussion, but it's obvious that, that you don't, we don't have a majority for FRS. So, what I would like to do is, I personally like to think about it some more. A lot of good information again tonight. I'd like to have some additional conversations with Andy and Marty, and sometime in the next, and even if it's not the next council meeting, sometime soon thereafter, to get this reconciled and, and give the employees something, an added benefit that I think all of us agree that they deserve. So, anybody else have any comments about that? Steve, and then Doug?
Yeah, Mayor, I think you summed it up well. I think it does take a little bit more thought here to determine exactly which, how we should go, and I think Marty's numbers are very good to kind of give food for thought in that direction. My only counter to that is that I would like to see this on the next agenda for the next meeting, and the reason why I would say that.
I'll concur with you on that.
Okay, great. We do, we do have one employee that, although I do trust that you, you have, you tie a good knot, and I'm counting on that, actually, but, you know, I would like to get this in place because that, you never know.
Absolutely, agree. Counsel, everybody okay with that? No problem, any problem with the next agenda? We'll have.
Next agenda, absolutely.
Absolutely, no problem.
And any other options that you can maybe bring us or come up with or look into that might fit into what we're looking at would be greatly appreciated brought forward.
Absolutely. Everybody did a great job doing their homework. Good discussion, good information. Okay, that concludes item number twelve. Item number thirteen, approval of the minutes for the January 23, 2014 regular council meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, and I know there's members of public sometimes that read these minutes, want to give you an opportunity. There is for public comment on this item. See no public comment. Public comment is now closed on this item. We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Erica?
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Councilmember Physickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jawansky.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, I'll take a motion adjourned.
Why don't you adjourn?
I know it's unanimous. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all very much.